Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the New Brunswick Board of Education Board meeting. I'll read the opening announcement. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 21st, 2018, to the Home News Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall at 78 Bayard Street in New Brunswick. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Hush.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood.
Here.
Mrs. Chikaitis.
Here.
Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer.
Here.
Mrs. Varela. Mrs. Ortiz.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
We'll have a forum.
Wonderful. Please rise and join the superintendent in the flagroom.
Ready to move. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands its one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will begin with item number three. A reminder, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 19, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM right here at the New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. So, number three, the presentation.
In honor of Board Recognition Month, Month of January, statewide, school districts are hiring our board members, and I just want to take this moment to thank you for the commitment that you have done here, the work that you have done here in New Brunswick for many, many years. Just as a superintendent here, I'm fortunate to have such a solid and strong board that holds me accountable, to make sure that I'm doing the right things to improve the lives of our students, our community, our parents, to uplift the spirit. And what you have taught me in my four years of tenure as superintendent is that you have to be steadfast, you have to be humble, but you have to be focused. And those attributes that you embody, as I meet with you each and every day, and the way you ensure or you make sure that we here in New Brunswick are doing the right things for the community in a subtle but strong way, really represents what a board and how a board should operate. So I just want to personally thank you, and I'm going to have you do a little exercise. So we have some certificates, and yes, you're going to have to get up and come and receive this, but I was going to probably give a little dialogue about each and every one of you, but I'll hold that for another time, maybe when I retire.
Good.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Edward Spencer, who has been on the board from February 1994 to January 2019. You can take the long way. I think you can take that way.
I'm taking the long way.
Okay.
You have to go out front so you can get a good picture.
Oh, boy. Anyway, thanks.
Next, I would like to recognize Mrs. Seawood, who's been on the board from July 1997 to January 2019. Next, it's Patricia Sadowski, who's been on the board from July 1997 to January 2019. Miss Jennifer Chikaitis, who has been on the board from April 2015 till January 2019. Miss Diana Solis, who's been on the board from January 2013 to now January 2019. Mr. Benita Ortiz, who's been on the board from January 1985 to January 2019. Next, I would like to recognize Dr. Dale Corwell, who's been on the board from July And we'd like to recognize Mr. Ronald Hush, who's not here this evening, who's been on the board from January 28th, 13th to January 2019. And also, who's not here with us tonight, is Patricia Varela, who's been on the board from April 2014 to January 2019. Again, we lead the community, administrators, assistant superintendents, directors, supervisors, everyone in the community wanted to just personally thank you. We know that you do not get paid to be on the board, but your dedication and commitment for all the years shall not go unnoticed. Thank you. Take a picture. Let me get that picture. What we would like to do today, this evening, is just give you a little glimpse, highlight some of the work that we are doing with our donor enrollment program here in New Brunswick. Dr. Fontanés.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, principals and board members, and Dr. Johnson, Mrs. Kusa, and everybody else. Thank you so much for having me. Buenas noches a todos, los directores, miembros de la junta de educación, directores, supervisores, y padres. I'm here to present the dual-language video, and I have something written. The New Brunswick Public Schools District is pleased to present tonight a video showcasing the dual-language program at Redshaw Elementary School. The dual-language program was launched in September 2017, starting with pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. This year, the program includes first grade and will continue to expand until fourth grade. The dual-language program at Redshaw School is an effective approach to developing language proficiency and literacy in English and Spanish. El distrito de las escuelas públicas de New Brunswick se complace en presentar esta noche un video que muestra el programa de lenguaje dual en la escuela primaria Redshaw. El programa del lenguaje dual se lanzó en septiembre de 2017, comenzando con pre-kindergarten y kindergarten. Este año, el programa incluye el primer grado y continuará expandiéndose hasta cuarto grado. El programa del lenguaje dual en la escuela primaria Redshaw es un enfoque efectivo para desarrollar el dominio del idioma y la alfabetización en inglés y español. Now, without further ado, let's enjoy a video that explains this program in more detail. Ahora, sin más preámbulos, disfrutemos un video que explica este programa con más detalle. Welcome to Redshaw Elementary School. My name is Dr. Andrea Fontanés, and I am the Director of the Bilingual ESL Program in New Brunswick Public Schools. I am very proud to introduce to you the Dual Language Program at Redshaw School. The program promotes language acquisition in English and Spanish. It also promotes bilingualism, literacy, student academic achievement, and cross-cultural awareness for all students involved in the program.
In our dual-language program, English and Spanish are taught using a 50-50 program model. Students spend half of the academic day learning their core academic subjects in Spanish with a Spanish-speaking teacher, and the other half of the day, learning in English with an English-speaking teacher. Students enrolled in the dual-language program learn English and Spanish.
I watched my son write the words in Spanish. I was saying to him, "Oh, this is a bear." He's like, "No, Mom, it's a noose." And that is exciting to me. That means that he's learning, he's paying attention. It also helps myself as a parent, his father. We are learning along the way as well, helping him with homework. It gives us another step into finding out what these words are, researching. So we're actually learning the language as he's learning English. So it's great.
In our dual-language program, there are two partner teachers, one English-speaking teacher and one Spanish-speaking teacher, in two separate classrooms, starting in pre-grade and continuing to grade four. Students switch classes after lunch, and they spend half of the day learning English and the other half of the day learning Spanish. Teachers in the dual-language program follow the same curriculum as the general education teachers.
Well, it's important for communication of both, both for the school, for our parents, and for the students. For them, it's more important to know two languages, because they can learn more later. They can specialize in more appropriate careers for their education.
I like learning how to count.
I like learning a lot in school and sharing with my friends.
I like communicating with my grandmother and grandfather.
Because I like counting.
Also, an English language learner, so I know that attaining a new language, as well as the content, can be difficult, but when I visit the classrooms here at Redshaw School, it's the exact opposite of that. So students are provided with a bilingual teacher, they have ESL support, and it's a beautiful thing to see the students not only excelling in the content, but also striving the language. We're preparing bilingual, bicultural, future-ready students. It's just pure greatness. So if you're interested in knowing more about our dual-language program or any other programs that we have at Redshaw School, please take a look at our website.
Moving on to item number four, amendments from December 18. Do I hear a motion approved? Is there a second? Roll call, please, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Chikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Hi.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Wonderful. Item number five, the superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson.
Yes, good evening. For the month of December, there were 104 district-wide suspensions, 17 cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Our student enrollment is currently at 10,329 students. Our student attendance rate was at 94%, and our certificated staff attendance was at 95%. Thank you. I conclude my report.
Thank you. Is there a motion accepted, superintendent's report? Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Chikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number six, we've been honored of hearing the student representative's report. Ms. Zoe Shider.
Okay, well, to start off, the National Honor Society members are receiving tax training with the Vito program to afford opportunities for them to assist families during this year's tax season. We meet every Monday and Friday after school from 2:30 to 4:00 PM for the entire month of January. National Honor Society has also began the application process. Students with a 3.5 GPA or higher are eligible to be a part of the program. We have applicant, we gave applicants the ability to ask any questions they had today after school from 2:30 PM to 3:30 PM. The deadline for applications is January 25. The Yearbook Club is now in the process of creating the yearbook for the current school year. They meet every Wednesday after school from 2:30 to 3:30 PM. For the STEM Club, a Rutgers alumni came to talk about engineering at Rutgers, as well as the whole. The members of the club reviewed a lot of information about different career paths one can take in engineering. During December 2018, extended hours for the MBHS snack bar went to operation. The snack bar is now open Monday through Friday after school, 2:30 to 5:30 PM. This is a new venture offered by Food Services to help our student athletes, after-school club members, and students receiving tutoring to enjoy a light snack and beverage to help them make it through the balance of their day. Snack opportunities have been well received by students and staff. January 4th, 2019 was Alumni Day. There were over 65 alumni that came to speak with over 150 MBHS students. Alumni conversations consisted of experiences and pathways while in high school, and the reality that took place after graduation. Many of the alumni have enrolled and attended colleges and universities. Others have acquired positions in business and industry. The current high school students were fully engaged in a conversation with alumni.
Any students catching a 7:30-7:45 activity? All start making a way to the cafeteria now, please. Any students catching the last 7:30-7:45 activity? All start making a way to cafeteria now, thank you.
Okay, so it is evident that the student athlete trainers, student managers, and coaches are very serious about their sport. Practices are ongoing with all members of the teams, attending with enthusiasm daily after they attend the Play It Smart program. All games and matches have been exciting and well-attended by students, families, and community members. In addition, MBHS athletes displaying focus on their sport, it appears that the high school students have been taking their studies seriously. Seniors are applying for scholarships with the help of MBHS guidance counselors. Monday, January 14, 2019, the counselors provided a work session after school for all seniors who would like to learn about the many scholarship opportunities available to them. Lastly, juniors have taken at the SAT assessments and continue to do so. They are looking at college opportunities and have been meeting with their counselors to discuss all options.
Excellent report. Thank you. Thank you very much. Nice job. Item number seven, the Facilities Committee report. Mr. Spencer.
Yes, Mr. President. I want to wish the audience and everybody a Happy New Year as we start this new year. We're looking forward to a productive year and improvements to our schools. We have listened to your concerns in our schools and will work diligently to ensure we have safe and clean schools to ensure our students get the best education and service. With that, I'm going to go right into the report. The solar panel project update? We're moving forward with the project presently. We'll have, we're working with, I think Roosevelt, right? Am I correct? That's right.
Lincoln Addicts we just did, and now we're moving forward with Redshaw and Roosevelt.
And Roosevelt, okay. We're celebrating the 100th anniversary of Roosevelt's school this, I believe it's Thursday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, tomorrow. My dates are all off. It's a very important time in our, in our school district to be celebrating a school anniversary. I just was going, I was going over some information on memorable incident and memorable moments in history. In 1919, Theodore Roosevelt, who was the 26th president, who the school is named after, passed away in 1919. The Eighteenth Amendment was enacted. That was the Eighteenth Amendment for prohibition. And the Nineteenth Amendment was approved for women's rights. That's a very monumental thing. And the last thing is Paul Robeson graduated from Rutgers University. As you'll read in the newspapers or in the news, you'll notice that there have various events going on throughout Rutgers and within the city of New Brunswick. It's a very important person that made a monumental efforts in his work for equality and for better than. This morning, I was reflecting on, on something I remembered when I was a young man, believe it or not, and it just resonated with me, and I appreciate the people that come in and our community come in and addressing the needs. But I just want to leave you with this. I want to end my message with this. Please put that on, please.
And so, my fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. My fellow citizens of the world, ask not what America will do for you, but what together we can do for the freedom of man.
Mr. President, that ends my report.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Spencer. I appreciate it. Item number eight, Policy Committee report. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, Mr. President. The Policy Committee did not meet for the month of January, and no further action required.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. The Athletic Committee report. Mrs. Sadowski.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. Winter sports are in full swing. At the high school level, we do have a coed varsity wrestling team, and their record right now is eight and five. They are number eight in the GMC, which is the Greater Middle Sex Conference. Last two wins that they had were over number five and number six teams in the GMC, and that was Edison and Woodbridge. So we feel our rankings should be going up. Some of our female wrestlers placed in the Buck Classic at Red Bank on January 12. Joanna Ortiz, Emily Reyes, Donna Walker, and Curly Borber, all placed first. Our girls have been very successful. Boys, girls, indoor track, boys were fifth-place medal in the GMC relay sprint, and the girls medaled in novice shot put and the 4x800. Our boys varsity team is seven and three, and with a record, and they're ranked number nine in the GMC. Our ladies, on the other hand, have not done as well. I attended the wrestling match last week against Edison, and I have to say that the, in our wrestling room, and it was very well-attended, there was not room for many more, and our students really conducted themselves very well, and it was really an exciting match. I also attended the North Brunswick basketball game for our young men, and we also won that in overtime. And today, I had the pleasure of seeing the JV girls' basketball team play, and they gave it their best. They did not win, but they never gave up, and they continued to play, and hopefully, with that attitude, the wins will start to come. Our middle school boys' basketball team is three and three. Girls' basketball team are not as successful, and our wrestling team is four and one. Postseason awards, one of our seniors, Felix Pareja, was first-team All-State Soccer. Congratulations to Felix. And one of our sophomores, 10th graders, Jeffrey Rodriguez, was honorable mention All-State Soccer. So we're looking for great things for Jeffrey in the coming years. Play It Smart, some of our students will be attending the Seven-on-Seventh Passing Camp that is sponsored by Jason Garrett, who is the head coach of the Dallas Cowboys, and that will be held at Princeton University this June. And our Play It Smart coaches will possibly be attending a national conference in New York City in July, and it's based on the Play It Smart program. We're also working on an online store that'll be attached to our athletic website, where you'll be able to obtain zebra merchandise. So we're looking forward to that. We will let you know the date when that will be online. And that's, I need a motion to accept the athletic reconciliation.
Is there a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Chikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you for that very thorough report. It's just great. We're breaking new ground, so, you know, outstanding soccer, outstanding wrestling, that's fantastic. Item number 10, the Curriculum Committee report. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, the Curriculum Committee met earlier today. There were no presentations. We had five items that either were either a full curriculum or textbooks. They were Animal Science, Robotics 1, Electronics 1, general music grades four and five, and visual arts grade four and five, and we had eight resolutions that were added to the consent of the items. No further action required.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. A lot of good work there. Item number 11, the Public Relations Committee report. Mrs. Diana Solis.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I would like to report.
Dr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. I'd like to report that the Roosevelt School 100-year anniversary celebration will be held tomorrow, and I did also want to remind all the parents that there is an early dismissal for the remainder of the week for parent-teacher conferences. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Solis. Item number 12, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. As a representative, just two items. One, the, as I mentioned before, the commission is establishing a 21 and over program so that we're able to work with students on the spectrum for their entire life, and there's an application before the state and waiting for that approval. And also, construction should be completed for the Professional Development Academy at the commission, so it'll be an opportunity for our teachers to expand their learning and participate there. It should be an amazing complex. With that, item number 13, I'll roll right into the president's report. As some of you know, I am the executive director of the Rothman Institute for Innovation and Entrepreneurship in my day job at Fairleigh Dickinson University. So two things. One, I can help get any of our students into Fairleigh Dickinson that you want, so I want to make sure that... to make sure that that's on the radar. Two, I spent the day at something called the Virtual Enterprise International, and what it is, it's a high school competition. It's mostly northern Jersey, and I was talking to them about New Brunswick, where students actually develop a company and virtually can buy and sell goods, and they develop some amazing communications. I saw some amazing presentation skills, some financial skills, some writing skills, and it's, it's really incredible. In my role in entrepreneurship, we're trying to be the voice of entrepreneurship, and it's becoming very, very clear that that's the wave of the future. You know, God or the days with 30 years and a big company. And so I think, and I think you guys have done a tremendous job of helping to prepare our students to have what we call the E mindset, the entrepreneurial mindset. But I think, as I talk to parents and teachers out there, you know, we need to begin to prepare our young people for the jobs of the future. And the jobs of the future, and actually the jobs of the present, most people are employed by small businesses. They're employed by businesses with less than 40 or 50 people. And there are plenty of those, and now with the low barrier of entry with technology. So, you know, as, I think we've done a great job, but we need to kind of be ready for the new reality that those are the jobs that are out there. And I think we've done a good job of preparing New Brunswick. In fact, I think a lot of urban students are better prepared than some of the suburban students. And so I just want to kind of put that out there, and this VEI, I'll send you some stuff, but it's something we may want to consider for next year. I don't think it costs much, but it's such a great experience, and these students were just so well-prepared. It really was, was encouraging. So with that, moving to item number 14, are there any comments from the public? Are there any comments? So, please, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please keep, please be as brief as possible so we can give others a chance to see. Okay. Do we have someone? You say your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Rades. I live in, swimming from Joyce Street near Brunswick. I come again for the issue of lack of air conditioning in the school.
I'm coming again to address the, the issue of lack of air conditioning in the school.
According to what we've discussed previously with the superintendent, he had said that there would be a possible solution for this month.
According to conversations we had previously with the superintendent, he had thought he may have a response about short-term solutions for this month.
And I've tried to talk to the superintendent, who has referred me to her secretary. She said that there would be possible answers until June 30.
We had reached out to the superintendent's, superintendent's office and spoken with his secretary and learned that the superintendent has indicated that there will likely not be any news about potential responses or solutions until the June 30th in the school year.
I'm worried because it's a possible answer. In person, and all the parents here present, that if they can be careful, that they will realize that we are asking or demanding the most friendly way that we can do this.
And this worries me because we want not just possible answers, and I've asked, I'm asking the parents who are concerned about this to stand up now to show that we're asking as politely, as firmly as we can for solutions to this issue.
Until now, we thank the director, but we believe that we can solve this problem.
We do thank Board of Education for all their work until this point, but we do believe that we can be more to solve this problem.
Here are our parents, who our children are in honor. And I think even though they are not in honor, they are responsible. We are the responsible for that our children have a comfortable environment to learn and achieve.
We are here as parents of students, some of them in our honor role, either, even those who are not, it's our responsibility as parents to make sure that our children are learning in safe conditions and healthy conditions.
My child is six years old. He wrote a letter for the superintendent.
My son is six years old, and he wrote a letter for the superintendent.
I would like to make sure that he understands that he is a child of six years, and in his language, he expresses.
And I'd like to share this letter with the superintendent, hoping that she'll understand. He's just a six-year-old boy trying to express himself the best way that he can.
I appreciate your concern, but I would like more of your solution.
And I do thank you for your concern around this problem, but what I would really like, what we really like is a solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for coming out, as are the parents. Just want to go through again the conversation. I'm asking if I can come back to the mic. I'm at, I just want to go through again the conversation that we had, so we're very clear. I do believe, if I recall, you came to an October board meeting to discuss the air condition in the school, and you wanted to set up a meeting with me to discuss. I believe two days later, I invited you to my office with Mr. Bergman to discuss the possibilities of providing air condition at Lincoln School. During that conversation, I showed you a manual of a cost estimate probably proposal that the district had actually started to do the prior year with the understanding or the hope to analyze the cost of providing air condition at Lincoln School, which I showed you the thick part of. What I committed to you was that I needed to see how many funds, how much funds would be left over at the end of the year to see what we can do. The end of the year has not come yet. I did say to you that towards the mid-year, January, I'll be able to give you a better idea of where we are. Unfortunately, I do not have that, so I don't have that information to provide. We are committed to providing air condition in the school. At the same time, we had the School Development Authority come into the district.
This is the final announcement for the 7:45 activity bus. Any student catching the last 7:45 activity bus, make your way to the cafeteria now. This is the last announcement of 7:45 Lincoln, last activity bus. Start making your way to the cafeteria now.
I believe in the month of December, from the state, and they toured Livingston School, Lincoln School, and Roosevelt School, and they saw the conditions. I do believe that also you attended the November board meeting, and you brought up the same concerns, and the response has been the same, that the district is committed to see what they can do to provide air condition to school. At the same time, during our conversation, I also expressed to you that I needed to see what the School Development Authority were going to do with these buildings, because I would not want to invest a lot of money if they were going to be in the pipeline, if Lincoln was going to be redone. So we had that conversation, which also is part of the analysis and planning process. I do believe you came back again in December board meeting, and you did state that you did go to Trenton to see the SDA, but you got nowhere. I could be wrong, but the records do state that you did say that you went there. Again, the district is committed to doing this. The last board meeting was, I believe, December 18th. You called my office on January 4th to ask, has there been any changes? And due respect, I know if you take a look at their workdays, that's only five days from the board meeting, in which we gave the same response. And I know you were not happy with the response on the 4th, but I cannot provide additional information, because we're only talking about five workdays. Between then and now, I think it's probably maybe 13 or 11 school days, so things have not changed, but our commitment is still there. However, the only thing that has changed is that I haven't received the information yet, but I believe on Friday, Mr. General, we did have some people taking a look again. And I have not received that information. I haven't had the time to talk to them, but I may ask him to just give a little bit of information if the board president allows. So, that's where we are. However, and I must say, we have three schools that need air condition. If I was to analyze the three schools, I would tell you that Roosevelt needed the most because it impacts the most students. But I am still trying to work out something to see how we can accommodate all schools. Past year, we put place air condition in Lincoln, in Lincoln School on the third floor. What I committed to doing, if nothing can be done, was see what type of AC we can put on the first floor, and hopefully, between the third and the first floor, we can compact the second floor, and then I can focus on the other schools. But right now, to be honest, Roosevelt has no air condition. So if the parents from Roosevelt, I want to believe, may be the first school on the target. Now, this work cannot happen during the school year. This work, if we do anything, is going to have to happen during the summer, when these schools are closed, because it requires a lot of rewiring from the main box through all of the walls. This is not an easy job. This is not, you know, it's very complex, and it takes, complex, and it takes time. So that's where we are. We have not been, you know, we've been really, really trying to come up with a plan to, to make this happen, but at the same time, you have to understand that by me saying to you, like, I cannot give you an answer, does not mean no. But I also do not want to lead in the wrong direction, because if there is no funding, then we have to come up with something else. Mr. General, do you want to just share any information if it's pertinent? If there's anything that you feel that you know first, you can hold back, but go ahead.
No, I think you said it really well. We did meet with the architects, and we went through more things, and then they will be giving us detailed numbers soon. But as you said, it is a very complex process in terms of increasing the electrical power from the street to the school, from the school to the supply throughout the school, so it's not as easy as buying some window units, air conditioning, and putting them in classrooms.
Thank you.
Okay, I understand, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate your commitment to these three schools. I just wanted to emphasize that the problem has been a long, long, long time, and I wanted to know that there will be a solution, and not promises. Not more years and years with the same situation.
I would just like to know, given that this has been an issue, a problem for many, many years at this point, that we look forward to concrete solutions and answers, hopefully not only promises, we hope not to have to wait many years more.
I'm a mother who is willing to work, dedicate my time, give of myself, and like the video that the board member Spencer showed JFK. We are willing to do, to work for this country, all of us as parents, so we are willing to put our heart in. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment, and on behalf of the board, I would let you know that the superintendent and the staff is very committed to this issue. We are very committed to this issue, and they have made this top of mind. And so, please understand that, and please, you know, explain that to the folks that have come. But I have to say, if you're coming every week saying the same thing, and we're trying to be helpful, please understand, the work has to go, you know, we can't do anything here, but we want to be very, very helpful, and it doesn't really help to come and say the same thing every week after you've met with the superintendent. So, we want to make this happen. We don't have total control, but we really appreciate you coming out and, and, and expressing your concern. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Do you say your name and your address?
My name is Annala Cruz. My direction is 51 Joyce, New Brunswick.
My name is Annala Cruz. I live at 51 Joyce, New Brunswick.
I'm here because I'm also a mother, and I support the parents whose children are enduring this problem. I have three children, all of whom studied at Lincoln School starting in 2003, and since that time before, it's been a problem that we've been aware of. I'm here to support the parents whose children are enduring this problem. I have three children, all of whom studied at Lincoln School starting in 2003, and since that time before, it's been a problem that we've been aware of. I'm here to support the board of education and superintendent Johnson.
And I'm just here wanting to express support of education and superintendent Johnson.
It's time for us to realize what's happening, that it's been more than 12, 13 years. How many years do we have to wait? We can't continue to wait. Our children are human, and I think as humans, we deserve respect.
And just here to share that we hope this problem is solved. It's been a problem since I've been aware, 12, 13 years, and counting, and we hope it's not much longer. Our children are human beings who deserve safe conditions and respect, and we hope that we provide it.
It's a problem that's been happening for many years, and how is it possible that it's been taken into consideration when it's a priority?
And for a problem that's been known for so many years, the question is, how can it have been considered top priority if we're still talking about it this time, many years later?
Could you, could, excuse me, excuse me. I didn't hear you translate. I guess, people may not have understood what the superintendent said. Were you able to translate in Spanish what he said, that we're working on it, that we now have a, the state is looking at the issue? The state didn't look at the issue before, so that's why we're working on it now? And he's, he's going to have some financial information in June at the end of the year to see if, if either the state is going to fix it or we can fix it? Could you kind of explain that? Because it sounds like people didn't understand that.
I wasn't translating, because they're using the headphones, so the response is provided in Spanish translation.
Oh, okay. But I'm saying, but we've explained that we're working on it, so I guess I'm, you know, again. to see if, if either the state is gonna fix it or we can fix it? Could you kind of explain that? Because it sounds like people didn't understand that.
I wasn't translating because they're using the headphones that the superintendent is providing a Spanish translation.
Oh, okay. But I'm saying, but we've explained that we're working on it. So I guess I'm, you know, again...
Yo sí entendí lo que usted dijo. El problema es usted también una solución en como un poquito pensando en el que va a pasar. Yo les estoy explicando lo que ya viene de años atrás. Entonces, lo que nosotros estamos pidiendo que se haga como prioridad y que si ustedes necesitan la ayuda de la comunidad, la comunidad está dispuesta a hacer encuestas, a mandar firmas, para que podamos hacerlo como llevarlo al estado o algo, para que la escuela pueda tener el fondo que se necesita. Que no ustedes necesitan de nosotros, para nosotros poder ayudarnos y ustedes poder hacer este proyecto que se mete con las escuelas.
And she did hear through the translation, Mopashir, and she just was wanting to share that, you know, after all these years, we really want to make sure that it's an urgent priority for the district. And she said also that as parents, as community, she wants to all understand that we are willing to work, we are willing to get petitions, to gather support, to take that to the state, to show that there is a need, whatever also that you as a district need, to show that there is support, that there is a need, that we can work together to solve this problem soon as possible.
Well, thank you very much. So one of the things that I think that you can be very, very helpful. Understand, Rich, what percentage of money comes from the state to pay for New Brunswick?
In terms of construction?
No, no, in construction and even for...
Well, in our general budget, it's about 78% state aid. In terms of construction, anything over $500,000, which this would certainly be, is 100% paid for by the state, and you have to apply to state, and they have to approve it and spend the money.
So I think, and I apologize, because we should be clear, that 78% to 100%, depending on construction, of the money comes from the state. So I can understand if you're sitting there saying, the board's holding, we're dragging our feet, we need to do this. Understand that New Brunswick is only paying 22% of the cost of this district. And so because of that, we have to rely on the state. They can pick and choose. They can ignore New Brunswick and go to Irvington if they want. So one of the things, if you, and I really appreciate your willing to help, one of the things is you need to go where the money is coming from, and the money is coming from the state. And if parents know, if the state knows that parents really want this air conditioning to be a priority, it's great to come at these meetings, but remember, the power when it comes to spending money for construction is in Trenton, not in New Brunswick. So I want, I want you to make good use of your time, and that would be very helpful to us. And just nice letters, not mean letters, not bad letters, but nice letters saying, "We care about our," everything you said here, "we care about our kids, we love our kids, our kids deserve air conditioning. State, can you help New Brunswick?"
Okay, pero mi pregunta fue cómo lo podemos ayudar nosotros a ustedes. ¿Qué necesitan? Necesitan encuestas, las hacemos. Nosotros queremos trabajar junto con ustedes, que las escuelas, el board of education trabaja junto con los padres para poder llegar a ver si es cierto que el estado divide el dinero a las escuelas que tienen prioridad. Entonces, en New Brunswick no tiene prioridad, claro que las tiene, muchas.
So again, she just asked that, like, asked even more specifically, let us know how, as parents, community, we can help the district. We know that the state controls the purse and decides which schools are priorities. So how can we help make sure that they see New Brunswick as a priority?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Okay, is there anyone on, we've talked about this issue. Any other, we want to make sure other people have other issues. They can talk. Any other issues? Please come and put in, state your name and address.
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Prattville from New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today. Happy to be here, everyone. I would like to ask about what appears to be a facility agreement here, a resolution of O on your agenda is, I guess, a lease for 40 minute Dyke Avenue. Can you please explain what motivated the district to enter into this lease? Does this market change with that facility?
So this facility, as you know, is the previous quote-unquote swing space for the school construction project. And now that Paul Robeson School is completed, the school development authority will not pay for that space any longer because they don't have a construction project attached to it. So the school district has negotiated a lease to keep that building because it's very much needed. We need every square feet of space that we have now and more.
Okay, so when does the lease begin?
It began December 6th, 2019, 18.
Okay, so why wasn't it brought to the board for approval prior to it being beginning?
It was. The board was in step of every way, and we let them know. And we had first approved them to negotiate the lease in August. And now, after the final negotiations, which happened in December, we now have the final numbers of the lease in terms of approving the payment for the 18, 19 school year.
Okay, so is this a nine-month lease or a 12-month lease?
It's two years. These dollar amounts are printed at the end of the year until June. It's a two-year lease.
Okay, so there's a two-year lease, but this dollar amount is December 6th until June 2019. Okay, I'm just curious why, you know, I've been attending most of the meetings, and I don't recall hearing anything about this in the facilities committee report. What will the district do with the space? And what, if anything, what is being done with it today?
As of right now, we do have a couple, a few offices in the building. We do our health science, technology, because you reuse the gym, rather than before we were sending the students out to work, because we use, they have to use this space because they don't have gyms. Moving into next year, we will be housing a new school. Still roughing out the whole PTEC model, the grant that we received from the, from the state, where we started with approximately 40 to 50 students and growing that number every year. So in four years, three years, we're looking at close to 300 students. Part of that issue, Mr. Prattville, is that our high school is overcrowded, way past its capacity, as well as our middle school. And we are in conversation right now to see what, what type of configurations we can do. I do not want to speak about it publicly because I really haven't shared it with the board, but we don't know if we want to start an eight, an eight-nine configuration in the building to reduce the class size in the high school, or do we want to build additional magnet high school programs and use that space? The high school is way over its capacity, and we anticipate future growth in the city of New Brunswick, in our middle grades as well. So we're just trying to be proactive with the understanding that we need space. We did not want to lose this space to any other entity. And we're trying to make sure that we provide our students an optimal learning environment. In addition, if we were to get a new building from Lincoln School, we have the opportunity still to maybe use the space. If we allow the space to just go, I don't know where New Brunswick will have a swing space as well. So it's also a strategic decision.
Understood. So what I'm hearing is, this year, a few offices and a gym are being used, but next year, it would be the site of the PTEC Academy, a PTEC school?
Yeah, you're hearing it for a, for a start.
Okay. And potentially in the future, other things and, you know, potential temporary space when other schools would likely close or renovate in the future. Okay. I appreciate you answering these questions, and I just want to end by saying that I stand with all the parents and families who are coming out here. And I think that we need to work together to get this district to be a priority for the SDA. And I think that, you know, it's great to celebrate history, you know, having a Roosevelt School turn 100 years old is great, but what better way to celebrate that 100th anniversary than by modernizing that school and bringing it into this 21st century? I hope we can work together to accomplish that. And thank you to all the parents for coming out.
Thank you. Any other comments? You could state your name and address?
Yes, mi nombre es Veronica, y yo vivo en 95 De La Bats Street.
My name is Veronica. I live at 95 De La Bats Street.
Lo que yo he entendido, en lo que ustedes nos han comentado que no hay dinero. Son 70%, por lo que necesite, el estado darnos o darles al sistema educativo.
So what I've heard from your comments is that there's not enough money, particularly that 78% of the budget comes from the state.
Okay, nosotros como padres, nos quisiéramos asegurar que el estado, con el trabajo de ustedes, con el trabajo de la comunidad y probando la necesidad y el largo tiempo que hemos tenido esos edificios, con todos esos problemas, quisiéramos que el estado comprendiera que New Brunswick es prioridad, no uno ni diez años.
And so what we really want to do as community, the district, is make sure the state understands and knows that New Brunswick does have to be priority with these schools that are so old, 100 years old and more, and that it's not a problem that to be solved in 10 years, but that it's a priority for now.
Entonces, no es, sorry. Entonces nosotros quisiéramos así, como nosotros apoyamos a mis hijos. No están en esa situación. Mi hija ya deshijó mi hija está por salir, pero vamos a ver por los pequeños que van. Mi hija también como lo que decía este, a decirle a mi mamá, en el 2003, el que pasó mi hija y todavía está sucediendo el problema, entonces no entiendo si ustedes hacen un reporte al estado de las condiciones de su distrito. Entonces comprender el estado es que ella nos toca.
And so I'm a parent whose, whose children are grown up now. I'm not personally, they're not personally for me going through this situation, but like the other mother, Share, who have children in Lincoln in 2003 on, we've been knowing and certainly we hope the state should have known all that time that this has been a problem and that New Brunswick should be a problem, that it's our turn, hopefully, to, to have this problem. The state helped fix this problem.
The last thing, the last thing.
The superintendent wanted to respond to that. Just want to make it clear that, or maybe you're not aware, the amount of work this board has done to ensure that the school district have top-notch facilities and the relationship that the school board has and the city of New Brunswick from the mayor's office with the SDA. I want you to take a look at some of the surrounding urban districts such as Trenton, Patterson, Irvington, and take a look at their facilities and compare it to New Brunswick. I want you to understand the work that has been done here to have Paul Robeson School built, to have Lord Sterling School built, to have Red Shaw School built. Tells me that the state understands the need of New Brunswick and they listen to the voice of the community. What the tone that I don't want to hear or want to feel is if we're not doing anything, and that's not the truth. We are committed, and we hear you, we really understand you. But I just need to point that out so you can understand that. And even though Mr. Board President, I mean, the president and the BA has told you that, you know, 70% of the, the funding comes from the state that funds everything, salaries, everything, anything over $500,000 has to get approved by the SDA. My conversation was that, at the end of the school year, I'm gonna try and see how much money I have left over. Leftover money, which we call breakage, is usually when you fund for positions that you did not fill. So if I have a position right now that I'm interviewing on, there's nobody there, at the end of the year, that money, because it was budgeted, I get a chance to use that. So I cannot determine that until the end of the year, to determine how much breakage, how much money I have that I probably can use for more teachers or other programs that I may have to commit for the AC, which is a problem only in the months of June and September. But it is important. So that is the conversation. We are committed. So if there was some money on the table right now, I will just tell everyone that I am looking at Red Shaw first, based on the needs.
Roosevelt?
Excuse me, Roosevelt. Based on the needs. And I can't make that determination until the end of the school year. So assume towards the end of the school year, unless something happens, a miracle, we will have the same issue. But there's not waiver from the commitment that we are seeing here publicly needs to happen. So I just want to close that this school district has done so much, because take a look at all the other inner-city communities and go visit their facilities. It's not even close to what we're, they're dealing with, to what we're dealing with. Okay? So we are, we are doing, you know, we will continue to fight, and we continue to, to, to as much as we can, but definitely with your support and assistance.
Thank you. So we have to work a lot together.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great. Any additional comments?
Teresa Viva, I'm also a mother of children that go to school in New Brunswick. I think I have a few more to you also, and I'm asking you for some collaborations. I think it's important that, to take advantage, that parents are want to get involved, to start working with the different committees in the schools and make sure that these parents get involved with this organization, PTA, PTOs, and start making sure that their voices are heard in those meetings. So they, the PTOs take another, another work per se. Because I think it's important, I've been hearing as a, as mother, as, as director of a local organization in Brunswick, I've been hearing many concerns about different issues. There is no place where the parents can go complain. There is no, no place where they feel that their concerns and suggestions are being made. And they have to come here, when you, when you are here and see, maybe tired or seeing and hearing the same things over and over. But I think it's important to pay attention that the community wants to make work, and you don't have any. I think it's not many parents that come to your meetings, and, and that's a problem. And I see as a problem. And, and I think when the parents don't feel comfortable coming to these meetings and you don't have that feedback, it's sad, because we need the, the support. We need to know what's going on in their homes, in their, in their schools, with their kids, and my dad is going to help them, you know? And I think I'm worried about the different situations that we are suffering right now. Teenagers running from home, no one knows places in New Brunswick the children can go to. There is not enough resources in terms of mental health for these kids. Teenagers, there is more bars in New Brunswick that really centers what spaces for you. We have only one big center, and that big center is full of activities, more activities for adults than for kids. And I think we have a problem. Maybe attempt, maybe more collaboration, as one of the mothers said before. But I think it's important for us to start thinking what is, in terms of, I think, the lesson of improving relations, work maybe that'll create a community outreach area within the work that works with all of us that wants to do something. Maybe start to play leadership, parents' leadership, to take the training, you know, to say, "Go and ask where the money is." Maybe, why we don't teach them how to ask for the money? You know, how to write these letters, how to be more proactive for the kids' safety? You know, have to, we have to use what is happening right now, the combination that exists to continue to raise education, that it's organized, buys to participate more into the kids' life. I have in my office many, many cases. Tengo en mi oficina muchos casos de niños que están desaparecidos, los niños que están aquí como asistentes, niños con luces, con caminos de cama, situaciones. ¿Sabes? Niños que están en sus aulas. Así que hay muchos asuntos. No solo educación por sí, lo cual me gustaría sugerir, y creo que, señor presidente, tú y yo estamos en una situación que necesitamos aprender sobre enemigos y verlos. Es muy difícil. Estoy viendo cada vez más que no ponemos eso en el componente de educación. Así que creo que vamos a tener generaciones de niños que van a estar ausentes para la vida del niño. Y todos nosotros tenemos un problema. Solo mi sugerencia. Queremos que todos los padres continúen trabajando con el superintendente. Creo que envíe una carta a él, sugerindo colaboración con un programa de jóvenes y también que trabaje con cualquiera del board, como muchos otros padres, para continuar con esta relación y no verse unos como enemigos o ver unos como colaboradores y agentes de change. Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Algunos comentarios?
Hola. Mi nombre es Raya. ¿Puede decir? Esta es la primera vez que estoy aquí con el board de educación. Realmente me gustaría decir un comentario sobre la asistencia. Pasé por algunos problemas y veo, como Teresa mencionó, sobre los teléfonos y todo. Veo que los maestros dicen, desde mi experiencia de mi hija, que necesita estar ausente de su escuela y no volver hasta que su mente esté completamente limpia. Creo que eso afecta a la asistencia de ellos participando en la escuela. Y solo tenemos un número de diez, diez días de ausencia durante todo el año escolar. Y a veces tienen un cuello y los maestros o... Bueno, la escuela no permite que tenga fiebre o algo. Creo que diez es un número menos. Pero luego de nuevo, siento que es para que los estudiantes no mueran muchas veces en la escuela. Y respecto al aire acondicionado, he escuchado algunos comentarios, y yo mismo, y prefiero decir que estoy dispuesta a poner 100 dólares o algo así de aire acondicionado en la ventana de mi hija de clase en lugar de que ella sufra el calor y tener que salir de la escuela temprano y los otros niños tener que estar en la escuela todo el tiempo. Y tengo que organizar mis planes, y todos los padres tienen sus planes para levantarlos de la escuela. Por el calor, solo los queremos que sean seguros y seguros. Y no esperar a que un niño muera o algo por el calor. Creo que eso es lo que tengo que decir.
Gracias por su comentario. ¿Algunos otros comentarios? No escuchamos ninguno. Pasaremos a la cuestión número 15, la agenda de la conciencia. ¿Hay una motion para aceptar la agenda? ¿Hay un segundo? Ok, voten, por favor, señor General.
Seawood. Miss Shikaitis.
Sí, he visto los temas C y D.
Miss Solis.
Sí.
Señor Spencer.
Sí.
Miss Ortiz.
Sí.
Doctor Caldwell.
Sí.
Miss Sedalsky. Voto aprobado.
Está bien. La cuestión número 16, el reporte del comité financiero. Miss Sedalsky.
Gracias, doctor Caldwell. El comité financiero se reunió antes. Y necesito una motion para aceptar el reporte del comité financiero.
Voten. ¿Segunda?
Segunda.
Voten, señor General.
Miss Sedalsky.
Sí.
Miss Seawood.
Sí.
Miss Shikaitis.
Sí.
Miss Solis.
Sí.
Señor Spencer.
Sí.
Miss Ortiz.
Sí.
Doctor Caldwell.
Sí.
Motion aprobada.
Ok, la cuestión número 17, la resolución para sesión cerrada. Les leeré la resolución y luego votarán. Mientras que la ley de las reuniones públicas abiertas, NJSA 10:46, provee que ciertos asuntos de la sociedad pública pueden ser discutidos en sesión cerrada, y mientras el board de educación pretende discutir asuntos como los siguientes: asuntos de personal, asuntos de privilegios de atentado cliente. Entonces, éstos deben ser resueltos con el foro de sujetos que se discuten en sesión cerrada por este board de educación y personal administrado. Y la ministra de ese tema, la sesión cerrada, la discusión se puede hacer en público si hay razón por la no descubrimiento y el reporte de la ley de las reuniones públicas abiertas no más existe. ¿Hay una motion? ¿Hay una segunda? Voten, señor General.
Miss Sedalsky. Miss Seawood.
Sí.
Miss Shikaitis.
Sí.
Miss Solis.
Sí.
Señor Spencer.
Sí.
Doctor Caldwell.
Sí.
Estamos en sesión cerrada.
¿Usted?